We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Call the rule, please.
Calhoun.
Here.
Dempsey. Fournier.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
McGirti.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Yor.
Here.
Excuse me, can I show Dempsey?
Thank you.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Okay, call the rule, please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Is there anyone with any? I have two. One, I'd like to take a moment of silence for a very important member of our community. Mr. Steven Saft Senior passed away this weekend. And so our thoughts and prayers are with the family of Mr. Saft. So we'll take him, take a moment. Thank you very much. I have another bit of bad news. Our city manager was in an accident last Saturday. Well, a week ago Saturday. And he sustained injuries that were pretty extensive. And he's had to have surgery and he'll have to have at least one further surgery. And so he's going to be out for a little bit. He is working from home. I don't think we could hold him back or hold him down. If you all know him, you know his energy and you know how committed he is to this position. And that hasn't changed and won't change. So as long as he's able to work from remotely, that's how we're going to continue. And it's been working well so far because we have an excellent staff. Our department heads are committed and have been making sure that everything is running on time and smoothly. So we wish him, we wish Greg and his wife Lori the best. And you know, our thoughts and prayers of healing are with him. Anybody have any questions or comments on acknowledgements, communications, and reports? Okay, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Questions or comments about the agenda? Okay. Call the rule, please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to public participation. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address the commission. We ask that you abide by our three-minute rule. You give us your first name, I'm sorry, last name and your residential address. And that you address your comments to the chair. If there's anyone who would like to address the commission at this time, we invite you to the microphone.
Good afternoon. This is General McCants, 550 Clanton River Drive. I'm on it here behalf of my good neighbor, Mr. Mary Ann Bullout, who lives at 79 Robertson Street. And next door, 77 Robertson, there's a garden in the front yard. Is that, is what we have in here in City of Mount Clemens? I'm just asking a question. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Gloria Haller, 260 CAS. So much, you're just going to have to listen fast. I've been discussing things with people recently. And what I think most of us would most like is to get rid of the present charter and return to the old one. The present charter calls for a city commission and a city manager, neither of which the old one called for. It called for a strong mayor, former government, and that mayor was elected. And if you're going to say you can't pay him, well, if you're paying the city manager, you can pay a mayor, especially one that knows what he or she is doing. And the main reason? This is a representative form of government that's not representing the full city and has not. And hasn't since the charter kind of went in. Like I said, I've told you in the past, I analyzed the elections from 1879 to 2015. And I slowly watched the representation, the northeast quadrant, the northwest, the southeast, and all reside in the southwest quadrant. And they've run the city ever since to the extent of where within 30 years after the charter was adopted, even as the planning commission and the Bosa were all southwest quadrant. They ran the world. And you wonder how we got where we are? That kind of answers it. Now, there's two other things that like on the next ballot. That was one. Get the millage back from 20 to 15. Everybody I know that's low on fixed income would love to have a 25% reduction in taxes. And how are you going to offset that? Well, odd couples. Yeah, Texas does make odd couples. Quinny Cody and Bobby Hill made an agreement to each other long ago that there would never be a city income tax because it would so impact the county payroll. Well, tough. That's a 33 some 36 million dollar payroll, the last I checked. And at minimum tax rate half percent, you'd be seeing a couple million dollars a year. And we need it. And the city commission at the time used to badmouth Dempsey and the rest of them. And they're, oh, don't want to do that. It's, well, that's because they would end up paying and they didn't want to do it. Now, what I was bringing up tonight, I read something in the journal. It was kind of upsetting. It was going to talk about, oh, oh, we had a little problem in the downtown, you know, the holy land, the residential holy land, southwest quadrant, the commercial holy land is a DDA. It's been a 40-year parasite on its host, which is the city. It's never had more than five to seven years success. It's a 10-year minimum cyclical failure. When we had the baths, which is, you know, are any of you aware that we sit atop a 300-year supply of minerals that are going to waste because you're not using them? Kind of get your stuff together. I'll get this issue the next time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Okay. We will move on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. And I don't see any on the agenda at this time, so we will move to approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
Questions or comments about the minutes? Call the rule, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
All right, we will move to general business 9A. Approval to renew the MDOT state trunk line maintenance contract. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to-
Go ahead, Eric.
You sure? Okay. Move to approve the 2024 to 2029 state trunk line maintenance contract, MDOT number 2024-0363, and adopt the attached municipal resolution as presented and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign and enter into the agreement.
Support.
Okay. The Michigan Department of Transportation is requesting the renewal of the attached contract with the City of Mount Clemens for routine maintenance on state trunk line highways. The contract is for a five-year term, period from October 1st, 2024, through September 30th, 2029, for routine maintenance along northbound M3 and southbound M3 within the city limits of Mount Clemens. Upon adoption of the attached resolution, a copy of the resolution, a certificate of insurance, and copies of applicable union agreements, which includes the McComb Supervisor Employee Association Contract, which is crew leaders, and McComb Municipal Employees Association Contract, DPW employees, will be provided to MDOT per the contract agreement. Anybody have any questions on this one?
This is essentially a renewal, right? What we've had.
There's really no change.
Yeah. We would like them to allow us to get rid of the weeds, but it's not in the contract. Thank you, Jeff, I appreciate it. It's a pet peeve of mine. All right. Is there any other questions? Call the rule, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Okay, general business 9B. Approval of the 2025 strategic plan.
Move to adopt the FY 2025 strategic plan as presented.
Support. Uh, mine's loading. Forgive me. I have paper one. You gotta love Wi-Fi until it doesn't work.
Do you want somebody else to read it?
Yeah, if you want, go ahead, that's fine.
In 2021, the elected officials realized we needed to plan to guide us through not only today, but well into the future. They drafted the first strategic plan for Mount Clemens, which provided the foundation for who and what we are and what we strive to be. As the plan grew, the city grew, and the time came to bring the plan into the next era and to a new level. After some long strategic planning sessions and some hard work from Hunch Free, I'm excited to share this new version of the Mount Clemens strategic plan with you. You should be proud of this new plan. This was a result of the hard work and effort you put into it. As your chief administrator, I can say that the plan is crucial to help guide the city into the future and meet the vision and expectations of the commission.
Thank you.
That's great.
I, I feel really bad that Greg's not here to present this one because I can tell you that he spent so much time on this with myself and the Hunch Free team. And you know, this has also been a pet project, I guess you would say, of mine as well. It's just so important. I really wholeheartedly believe that it's helped us move forward. And you know, the whole team is able to be on the same page, literally. And I'm really proud of that. So.
The beautiful thing about this plan is we've done it for the last few years now is that it's, it's not on the shelf. We are, it's being worked, right? We refer to it. It is a guide. It is, it is fluid. We, you know, update it on an annual basis. So it really is a good thing to have for the city. It's good guidance and reflects what we landed, what we're going to focus on.
And it's this current edition of it. I think when Greg wrote in the, in the letter, that it's taking it to another level. I mean, the professionalism of this document, it looks like who we want Mount Clemens to be represented as, right? And so I'm incredibly proud that he's taken this document to the next level. And if he was, if he's listening, thank you, Greg.
I agree.
But I will say that, and I will say that I know in our department head meetings, it's often referenced. I know like when, when they're making decisions now, it's, 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 I mean, they're living by it. And I mean, am I speaking correctly, Kathy? So I don't know if it's like, it's sometimes I'm sure it's a good thing. And sometimes I'm sure it's a, oh, we have to hear about the strategic plan again. But, but I am really proud of it. And I know I'm thanking, I really want to thank them for taking this seriously and buying into that as well as knowing that this will help the city.
I really want all our residents to be able to look at it and enjoy it. I know it's part of the packet and available online for everybody. But is it also available if somebody wants a hard copy? Where would they go?
Yeah, we will, we can print them as well. So we'll, we'll probably put some on the counter on the second floor. After, after it's approved, we can have some printed and have some of those available. But they are, after tonight's meeting, they will be available on our website on the actual like banner page. So you can, you can click on them and easily access them right now. Right now, you'd have to like go to our meeting and it's a little bit more cumbersome to actually get to it. But tomorrow you'll be able to get to it on the, on the website pretty easily.
Great.
All right, does anybody else have any questions or comments about that? Yes.
Before I got on the commission, I'd read the previous ones. And it's great to see how many things were able to be crossed off when we had a session to talk about all of these years. That's thanks to the work of the administration and of the commission. So you know, this document took input from commissioners. It took input, of course, from the departments. And I'm really just very confident that this will help us as we look forward to the future that we want here in Mount Clemens. In particular, I think this is something that, I mean, you had something to do with Mayor Crapp. But the, um, the statement at the beginning that we embrace our diverse community was prior. That that's an organizational mission, set of core values. I think that's extremely important because it really shows that, you know, our focus is on serving the community. And through this document, this is how we plan to do that. And of course, if you have questions or concerns, you want us to see new things and see new things add into it, let us know so it can happen for next year. But I'm not so proud of this.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, go ahead and call the vote.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate that one. All right, 9C. Purchases and payments of invoice. I'm not going to beat Ron Campbell's tie in my shortest meeting. I thought maybe we could get there.
We made too many comments.
Move to approve the purchases and payments of invoices as presented.
Support.
All right, questions or comments?
It's a lot. Should we go over each?
Lenny, you want to go to the microphone on this one? Because I'm sure, I'm sure you're going to be.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Were all these in the budget?
The emergency purchases were not the 300,000. That saw some equipment that broke down that we, we have to have to keep the plant operating.
God bless you. Every month, there's another thing that broke down.
Yeah, this was a big one.
Yeah.
Kind of open-ended too, which is scary because we're still not out of clear on it.
This is the one that we had to fix, but then we're, we were working on a solution that just isn't ready yet, right? Was that that same thing?
We were delayed because of getting the CWSRF loan. And our equipment totally failed while we were waiting to get the, to get it all running. So we had to bring in this rental.
And the, the people that are building the new centrifuge?
Yes.
Are fully aware?
Everyone's aware. The engineers are aware. We're doing everything we can to get it up, up and running as quick as possible. The new equipment has arrived, but the building is not ready yet. It's just because of all the delays and so we're in a tough spot.
I'm sorry, is the, the rental equipment, does it seem like it's going to be enough to get us through to when the new stuff is up and running?
As of last week, I would have said no. We're still, and we're at a really critical point where we should know within the next week or so.
Well, going from no to, is still making progress of a sort?
We are making progress. We're removing solids at least now.
Okay.
So we are really far behind now.
And Eagle has been notified, correct?
Yes, they have been notified.
So we're, we're still within regulations.
Yep.
Well, thank you for all your dedication and that you haven't just walked out the door and said, yeah.
It is stressful. Super stressful. Okay, and then the, but the other ones that are capital outlay were within the budget. And CWSRF, right? They're covered.
The pole barn was in the capital improvements in the budget because the building that the new equipment is going into for the CWSRF, that's where we used to park all these vehicles that would freeze. So we have to build the pole barn to park these vehicles now. So.
Many layers.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any further questions or comments on this one? Okay, call the rule, please.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes. All right, we'll move to consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Call the rule, please.
Rick.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Okay, we will move to city manager's report. Hopefully my, there we go. All right, streets. Various road construction projects are still underway with an expected completion of the end of October. Please remember, as fall approaches, do not rake or blow leaves into the roadway. The refuse contractor will be picking up yard waste placed at the curb through December 6th, 2024. The clerk's office absentee ballots were mailed on Friday, September 27th. Early voting begins on Saturday, October 26th at City Hall from 8:30 until 4:30 PM, daily for nine consecutive days. Voters from all precincts are invited to vote at this location and skip the crowds on Election Day. Recreation. Fall recreation programs are in full swing. You can still register or inquire about community events and programs at mountclemensrecreation.org or call us at 586-469-6800, extension 520. If there is a class you would like to see provided by Mount Clemens Recreation, please contact us. Information is also available on our Mount Clemens Parks and Recreation Facebook page, website, and Instagram. Fire department, the basement bar or Frank Seaside Tavern, held a fundraiser for the fire department. In total, they raised $865 for the purchase of smoke detectors to give to residents. So we thank them. Upcoming events. The monster zombie parade is Sunday, October 13th. Dress as your favorite monster or zombie, march through the streets downtown, meet at the fountain stage at 6:30. The parade starts at 7:00. You'll have a chance to win ghoulish fun prizes and opportunity to donate to the local animal rescues. The Halloween Spooktacular will be Saturday, October 19th, from noon to 3 PM. Roscoe the Clown Show at 1 PM. Mount Clemens Kiwanis Club Cakewalk, the Lions Club Haunted Hallway, and the Lions Club Free Vision Screening Inside the Discovery Centers are all things you can do at the Spooktacular. Mount Clemens Optimist Club Truck, Trunk or Treat will be the same day, Saturday, October 19th, from noon to 3 PM in the McComb County Parking Structure on Main Street. And we'll also add, the Current Community Center will host the grand opening of the play structure on Saturday, October 19th. So it will be a big day in the city from 10 to noon. So if I'm planning your day for, for you, you can go to the play structure from 10 to noon. You can go to the Optimist Trunk or Treat at noon to 3:00 and then go over to the Spooktacular from noon to 3:00. So lots of stuff to do and have fun in downtown on October 19th. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the city manager slash me on the report? All right. We'll move to public participation. This is the second opportunity of the meeting that we allow the public to address the commission. We ask that you come to the microphone, give your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. If you would like to address the commission at this time, come on up to the mic.
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 day. First, I'm going to speak on behalf of the McComb YMCA. We'd like to thank each and everyone, not only in the city, but around the county that helps support our golf outing. It was a success for us to continue to do the work that we do in the county of McComb. Thank you so much. Secondly, what is the ruling for the City of Mount Clemens on garbage day? I'm sick and tired of people putting their garbage in the street along the curb instead of on the curb. And it's getting to be a problem. You know, the street sweeper, if he's sweeping that day, he can't sweep because bags of garbage and leaves are in the curb, in the street part of it, instead of sitting up on the, the curb of the grass. Is there an ordinance where these bags and stuff are supposed to be sitting? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone? Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Hello again, Gloria Haller, 260 CAS. I can get to my main issue. Reading in the CNG newspaper, I read how there's been some incidents in the downtown. Well, too bad, there's been incidents in the neighborhoods too. You don't pay attention to those. And I wrote it all out so I wouldn't forget anything. Let's see. We're not having, and we're not paying for patrols in the DDA about some homeless urinating on buildings unless and until the neighborhoods get patrols first. And this is about assaults on people. This isn't just peeing on buildings. This is assaults on people. And I can speak to it directly because I was assaulted twice in June. Trying to get into my house from my car with groceries. I got assaulted twice. And I, yeah, I got the police reports around the number. Let's see, it's 52956-24. If you don't believe me, check it out. When you've got a town where people can't even get from their house to their car or car to their house without being assaulted, what the hell? And you're talking about, oh, patrols in the downtown? Really? That's where your priorities are? Shame on you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? All right, seeing none, we will go on and move to commissioner comments. Commissioner Yor, sorry. Blinked out there.
That's because you were going to start over.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Every time there's people in the audience, I want to remember to thank you for coming. It really, we, we appreciate seeing you out there. And thank you to all of you who got up and spoke and let us know what your concerns are. Myself and the rest of the, of the commission really do appreciate that. I'm going to add one thing about a resource that I don't think we've spoke about before. Usually Commissioner McGirti has them all. I don't know, we don't talk enough about the health center at the Mount Clemens second, uh, middle school, high school building. So there is a Henry Ford School-Based Health Center there. And some people believe it's just for the students, but it is for the community. They see people aged three to 21 with, and no cost to you. So that clinic is funded with a mid-level provider who works with a physician. And they will take care of preventive health. So things like vaccines and immunizations and sports physicals and all those things that kids need. And also they are there to see sick kids or kids with a chronic health condition that need to be monitored. So I want to just remind the community about that. It's a real gem. They're located on the west side of the building. And that's intentional so that there's a entrance to the community. People don't have to go through the school to use the health center. I can give the number. It's 586-461-3363. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McGirti.
I just wanted to share that I had a residential experience with some dogs in our yard. And it had been happening so much, you know, they destroyed our fence in the backyard. But we have a wonderful neighborhood, so we talked to each other to kind of work it out. But it just happened to be the internet man needed to get in my backyard. So I couldn't let him go back there because I didn't know the dogs. Long story short, I called our city, who has our, we have our own. And Art, his name was Art. He came out and he was, he was wonderful. We took care of the challenge. Long story short, he went and talked to the neighbor. He came back. It was a peaceful resolution. So where the neighbor and I talked, we figured out what was going on with the dogs, the whole nine yards. And I told him, in the commission meeting, I would mention him. Because oftentimes, not even often lately, our city, the people that work for the city are overlooked the small, big things until we need them. And I said this in the beginning and I really see it now. Mount Clemens has really grown to be a more community. I think we're doing a phenomenal job, one-on-one with our residents. Everything is not perfect, but if you don't pitch in, you're part of the problem. So I told Art, I said, I like that we resolved this. Because I was here, because I needed my cable. And he resolved it peacefully. He was just so pleasant and we talked. And so kudos to Mr. Art, who works for the city. And apparently he's been with the- And so kudos to Mr. Art who works for the city. And apparently he's been with the city for a long time.
Long time.
Long time. Um, I did want to mention on October 26th, from six to eight PM, at Karn's Community Center, there is going to be a harvest party. So there is, it's a trunk or treat with the cars and anybody is welcome to bring their car decorated, pass out whatever you choose for the children, as well as come inside, do some games and crafts, dance with the children, take pictures, um, at Karn's Community Center, just for two hours. And so it is, um, the community outreach ministry at the Church of Christ who is hosting it, but they're partnering with River Acres Community and the National Council of Negro Women. So it doesn't fall on one person. So we want to help the community. So bring your kids, grandkids, bring yourself out. I'll dance with you in the gym. I will. If you have any challenges, always remember nine one one is an option. So if you feel threatened or you hear some suspicious noise or what have you, just call nine one one and then they'll take it from there. Don't wait. Don't think that you thought that's what they're here for. And they apparently have been doing a wonderful job in our city. We did have an incident in our neighborhood the other night. Um, a girl was running down the street screaming, somebody help me. Our dog made us aware. And long story short, it was, um, it was physical. And nine one one was right there. I was on the phone calling and somebody else had called and they were already right there. So we alerted our community to turn your porch lights on. So I want to end in saying this, turn your porch lights on. Turn your porch lights on. Turn your porch lights on. Because nobody that's doing crime wants to be seen. So if you have a sensor, that's awesome, but it's okay to just have that porch light on. It's worth you paying a couple extra dollars a month on your DTE bill to leave that porch light on. Everybody be safe and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
I just want to congratulate our newest members of the historical commission. I saw my neighbor out there, Mary Sobieski and Angela Beckett. Thank you so much. And didn't mean to one-up you there, Eric. And, uh, and thanks to Catherine Reed for renewing her, um, commitment on the Brownfield Authority. I want to thank the, all of the department heads at the city sincerely for all of your help since Greg has been sidelined here a little bit, but, and of course Mayor Crop. And I know you're listening, Greg. So I hope that, but I appreciate all the work that you've done and we're going to keep this going. But Greg is very much active in everything. Every text message I send him, he answers it. And, uh, so I wish him the best and good health and some positive news when he goes to see this ortho. And we all want you back here and, uh, sitting in that seat, hopefully for the, probably won't be the next meeting. Probably will be no.
I mean, he thinks he's Superman, but you know.
But thank you very much, all of you. And Lenny especially, dear God, have to go through what you, you've, you've got a lot on your plate.
For sure, for sure. Uh, Commissioner Rick.
Thank you, Mayor.
We won't make you wait.
I'd also like to wish speedy recovery to, uh, City Manager Shipman. Please do what the doctor tells you to. I know you won't, but do it anyways. Um, also I'd like to, uh, just ask everyone to hold the folks affected by the most recent hurricane and those in the path of the next one, uh, in your thoughts and prayers. On that note, on social media, please be careful what you share. There's a lot of misinformation and disinformation out there. And that includes when it comes to, uh, opportunities to donate, there are scammers that will try to take your money anytime, any way they can. If you're planning to donate, make sure you do through a reputable, uh, channel. Big thank you to Sergeant for the presentation at the, uh, to the downtown businesses and for the work and coordination you've been doing with them. I'm glad to hear that things are progressing in the right direction. And I mean, it's really nice to see every, everyone come together.
Yeah.
Work together and make the situation better. Cause it couldn't be done with just you and your team because you're not there all the time. And it's, it takes the, the businesses, the residents, you, the city staff, everybody working together, and we're seeing progress.
Yes.
Big thank you to the clerk's office and, and good luck in the upcoming, uh, week or so. It's going to be, well, month. It's, it's going to be hectic. On a, uh, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Macomb County's Office of Senior Services and the Macomb County Elder Justice Alliance. They were one of fourteen places in the country that were awarded a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, for, uh, training, best practices. And I expect you'll see, uh, even more services coming out of the Office of Senior Services, uh, going forward. Uh, thanks in part to that. Uh, thank you, Ruthie Stevens, for raising awareness on, uh, Breast Cancer Month. Um, talking about cancer is one of the best ways we can help each other deal with it. As always, thank you, everyone that attends who brings their ideas, their concerns to the commission. This is how we get better. This is how we make things better. Uh, thank you, Mary and Angel for your, uh, serving on the historical commission. Thank you to Catherine for serving on the Brownfield Redevelopment Committee. Catherine, good luck on keeping the chairman there under control. Um, if anybody else is interested in serving on one of our boards, committees or commissions, more information is available at our website, or you can stop by City Hall or give us a call at five eight six four six nine six eight zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Calhoun.
One thing that no one else said. But, um, so the first one, uh, in this consent agenda, we, uh, just want to let everyone know that the Mount Clemens, uh, Community Schools is having their homecoming parade, uh, on October 11th. So the parade will begin at the high school at five PM and it will go down Church Street. And it'll return to the high school after the parade. Um, and so just want to invite everyone to go out and support our high school. Um, and I know people's been going to football games and our team's pretty good this year. So, um, just, you know, please continue to support our students there. Um, I also want to say that, um, the, this weekend, I, uh, spent a little time downtown talking to folks. A few bus went out to, uh, grab some food and, uh, people are saying that the changes are working down there. They're seeing, um, they're seeing less incidents happening, residents, uh, residents downtown feeling better. People who shop in downtown are feeling better. Um, it is important to note that the entire community does matter when it comes to public safety. Everything else is for safety, right? We're here for everybody. And so thank you for, um, bringing forward concerns about public safety in other parts of the city. We'll work hard to make sure that our partners, law enforcement are continuing to, um, patrol across the city and that, um, and that everyone feels safe. Cause that is what's the most important. Uh, it's the most important thing. So, um, thankful to this great crowd. We've got a very small agenda. So great to see everybody. Uh, congratulations to those who are joining, uh, or, uh, continuing their service on, uh, support and commissions.
Thank you. Um, I will be hosting a coffee talk, uh, tomorrow, um, Tuesday, October 8th, nine thirty AM, um, at John's Family Grill. And then again, Thursday, October 10th at six thirty PM at Black Cat Coffee. If you would like to join me and come and talk about things that are happening in the city, um, love to have a cup of coffee and, uh, share some discussions. Um, I'll also be, uh, delivering the state of the city, State of Mount Clemens address on Friday, October 25th at eight AM at the Emerald Theater. Tickets are available at the Macomb County Chamber website. They are thirty-five dollars and you get breakfast. And a really great performance, not by me. We have a surprise performance in the beginning. So, um, we are going to have our Mount Clemens Skeleton Contest presented by the Mount Clemens Beautification Committee. Twenty businesses and organizations are participating. Many of them are in downtown. Some of them are city buildings like the library, the, um, City Hall, the fire station. And so you can get in on the fun and judging begins October 17th. So visit any of the stores and you can pick up a ballot or cast a ballot. Um, and I will be presenting the awards on Halloween at one PM. Um, thank you to, uh, Ms. Stevens for the pens, but also for mentioning that it is, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness a Month for October. Both my mom and her sister are breast cancer survivors. And so I encourage everyone in October or throughout the year, but to take the time, does not take long to go get your mammogram, uh, yearly done so that after forty years old, that you make sure that you're staying on top of that because prevention, um, sorry, because prevention is making sure that you take care of that appointment yearly. So. Yes. Men are included. Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Um, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Nobody wants to. All right. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.